We will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, November 3, 2025. And I ask that you rise for a brief invocation and be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we meet in what appears to be a troubling time throughout our world, we are ever thankful for the many blessings that Batavia has and continues to receive, and for the outstanding group of citizens that proudly call themselves Batavians. Batavia has much to be proud of, and I think we are doing a lot to show it. And Batavia will hopefully continue on this path for generations to come. Tonight, we ask for a special blessing on those from our community who are sick or infirmed, and we just ask that the special blessing of health be showered upon each and every one of them. We ask finally for a moment here at the City Council where the aldermen share their best ideas and thoughts and proposals, and know that what they are doing here is only trying the best we can to make Batavia even a bigger and better and more wondrous place than it is already. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman, you want to do the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the City Clerk to please call the roll.
Barazza?
Here.
Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
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 Anderson?
Here.
White?
Here.
Fourteen present, Your Honor.
All right, moving to item number four, which is a reminder from the chair that if you're going to address us tonight, that you please come forward and use the podium with the microphone. This is being recorded on BATV, and so if you don't speak into the microphone, you're not heard on TV. So please do that if you're so in need of speaking before us. Moving to item five, which are items to be removed, edited, changed on tonight's agenda. Does anybody have anything? I guess not. All right, moving then to item number six, is the consent agenda. Alderman, you have that?
I do, Your Honor. Sorry. Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follow: Place and Accept on File, July, June, July, and August 2025 Financials; Committee of the Whole Minutes for September 30, 2025; Special Meeting, October 14, 2025; and October 20, 2025 Special Meeting. Approvals: Payroll Fund Totals for 1024-2025 in the amount of $1,080,022.48. The accounts payable total for the November 3 Council Meeting is $3,756,997.91. Approved Cow Executive Session Minutes for October 14, 2025. Approved City Council Minutes, October 20, 2025. Ordinance 2025-58: Extension of a 90-day moratorium on the acceptance and processing of certain building and zoning applications for light industrial and general industrial properties in the South River Street Gateway Overlay District. Resolution 2025-123-R: Authorizing Purchasing of Benches from Noble Winds CS. And Resolution 2025-126-R: Authorizing Execution of a Temporary Construction Easement with the Batavia Park District for the South Water Street Slope Stabilization Project. Your Honor, I move we accept the consent agenda as read.
Motion second for the acceptance of the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions? Clerk call the roll.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Peiper?
Aye.
Farrenbach?
Aye.
Thank you. Anderson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
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 Fourteen, yes. No, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. Moving then to item seven, Matters from the Public for Items Not on the Agenda. Does we have anybody this evening? Okay. Moving then to item eight, which is Proclamation Honoring the Memory of Bryce Worley. And Alderman, Baron, you have this?
Lehman.
Oh, Lehman, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just want to mention that the City Council, we're wearing green tonight in memory and honor of Bryce. So, and we're happy to have you all here tonight also. A proclamation: Whereas the City of Batavia honors the lives and residents who exemplify courage, kindness, faith, and joyful resilience. And whereas on November 7, 2022, the City Council recognized Bryce Worley for his brave and determined fight against an inoperable brain tumor, a fight he waged with extraordinary strength and positivity. And whereas Bryce, a proud 2023 graduate of Batavia High School, continued to defy the odds following his diagnosis in 2019, demonstrating what it means to truly live in every moment, continuing school, working at Wendy's, exploring the outdoors, and embracing every opportunity with gratitude and enthusiasm. And whereas Bryce cherished his family above all else, he is the beloved son of Tamian George Wilson and Nicholas Worley, a protective and loving brother to Hayden, Layland, Cory, Lindsay, and Maisy, a proud uncle to Isla, Dylan, Celeste, and Juniper, and is survived by his grandfather David Worley, great-grandparents Alfred and Annie Purcell, and a large circles of aunts, uncles, cousins, and friends who adored him. And whereas Bryce lived with passion and a playful spirit, he grew up athletic and adventurous, playing BYB baseball, flag football, boogie boarding and ocean waves, and magnet fishing along the Fox River, where he collected treasures he proudly brought home. And whereas Bryce connected deeply and authentically with every person he met, his humor, sometimes spicy, brought laughter in even the heaviest moments. He made every space brighter just by being there. And whereas, throughout years of treatments, surgeries, and rehabilitation, Bryce maintained unwavering faith, telling his family they would continue to move forward together, and reminding them always to stay unguarded and stay open to the world. And whereas Bryce loved Batavia wholeheartedly, its sunsets, downtown shops, the Fox River, and the people who supported his journey, more than 200 community members gathered at the river for a celebration of his life that he was able to attend, a day filled with music tacos and love. And whereas Bryce lived a lifetime of joy and six years of fighting cancer, traveling, laughing, working, riding around the region on his e-bike, supporting his family and offering strength to others, every new treatment gave him more time, and he used that time fully and beautifully. And whereas, on October 4, 2025, Bryce was called home to God, surrounded by the love of his family, in his final days, he continued to say, "Thank you, and I love you," still smiling that unforgettable grin. And whereas his family and community, united in grief and gratitude, are dedicated to carrying his legacy forward through the Bryce Worley Foundation, which will provide scholarships to students who embody his exceptional spirit of compassion, courage, and kindness. And now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of City of Batavia, Illinois, do hereby proclaim our deepest admiration and everlasting remembrance of Bryce Worley, whose faith, humor, joy, and love for others continue to inspire us all. May we be like Bryce, living fully, loving fiercely, and embracing each day as the precious gift it is. Your Honor, I move to approve the proclamation as read.
Second. Motion second. Clerk call the roll.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Peiper?
Aye.
Farrenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Again, thank you. Fourteen, yes. No, no, none absent.
So, it's very customary that when we do some phenomenal proclamation like this one, that we ask the members of the family and the friends of the person who's being noted to come forward, and I will present the proclamation to you, and that way we'll get it on BATV. We got to get you over here in the center of the audience here. So, got to have all of you who are here for Bryce, if you would come forward. Turn to the center, that's where all the cameras are. It's that way. Cameras are all around.
I've loved having you in the circle.
The proclamation, I think it does good to speak of Bryce and the way that he lived. I didn't get to know him when he...
He was very proud of him.
On behalf of the City Council, and I think this proclamation speaks very well.
Batavia has made us know what you thought about Batavia and how proud you were. So, I'm very proud of you for presenting that.
All right, moving to item number nine on our agenda, Presentation by Batavia United Way with Updates and Upcoming Events.
Thank you so much for allowing me to come in and share what we've got going on here at Batavia United Way. I'm Kathy Evangelista, the Executive Director of Batavia United Way, also a 20-plus-year resident of Batavia. So, we have, we've been very busy. Our fall events, we just hosted two of our biggest fundraisers of the year, our Community Dinner Table and our Bat Race 5K-10K in October. And between the two events, we raised nearly $50,000 for the residents of Batavia. So, everything that we raise goes right back into Batavia, supporting our Batavia residents. So, that was, we're super happy with that one. We have another event that we are planning to support, the Early Childhood Literacy Initiative. We are planning an event in January to honor and celebrate Dolly Parton. It's her 80th birthday in January, so we'll be having a big Dolly extravaganza. More to come on that one. And we are now entering into our busiest time of year, lots of different volunteer events coming up. This coming Sunday, we have our annual Day of Caring Leaf Raking Event, where volunteers in Batavia fan across Batavia and rake the leaves of senior citizens and people with physical limitations that can't get the leaves down to the curb and need a little bit of help with that in preparation for the leaf pickup that the city does. So, that's on this Sunday, November 9, from 1 until 3. Hopefully, the weather cooperates. I'm watching the weather. I looked at the weather today. It looks like it's going to snow. Hopefully, that doesn't come to fruition. But if anybody is interested in helping out, we still have, we still have room for volunteers. You can find out about how to volunteer on our website, www.batavionitedway.org. If you need help, or if you know of anybody that needs help, please have them contact us either at info@batavionitedway.org or call us at 630-877-2780. I'm sure you all wrote that down. You can also find that information on the website. So, that's coming up this Sunday. We also have our Volunteer Snow Shoveling Program, our Snow Angels Program, that's launching right now. This is a program that we've been running for three years now. This is our third year. We have volunteers who sign up to basically adopt a driveway of a senior citizen or a person with physical limitations who cannot safely clear their driveway or their sidewalk and can't afford to have it done for them. So, we have volunteers that sign up, and they basically take on that one driveway for the entire snow season. So, that can also be found on our website. If you know of somebody who could use this service, there is a form to fill out on our website. If you are someone who would like to help out with this service, there's a form on our website. We've been, like I said, we've been doing this. This is our third year. So, I think we've, over the past two years, we've probably done about 25 driveways over those two years. Last year, I'm happy to say that we actually had more volunteers than we had driveways to do. And they only, they only went out twice. It doesn't snow that much here. And then we have our very, our biggest, biggest volunteer event that really makes the holiday season what it is for me, and that is our Holiday Adopt a Family Program. This is a program that we partner with Batavia Public Schools, who identify kiddos who could use a little bit of holiday cheer, could use some assistance over the holidays. The public school staff are the ones who identify those kids, and they're in that process doing that right now. On my end, I'm the one who's identifying people who would like to sponsor these kids and shop from different wish lists for these children. We are going to have the biggest need that we've probably ever had. Last year, we served 365 kids. We are slated to go even further than that. And right now, I have sponsors for only about 260 kids. So, I am looking for more sponsors who would be willing to shop for families. Not only do our families receive gifts from those wish lists, but we are ensuring that they're getting coats. So, we have partnerships, collaborations with the Rotary Clubs, Batavia Rotary and St. Charles Breakfast Rotary. They've already provided us 120 coats for our kids. We have also a great collaboration with Batavia Lions Club. They host an underwear party for us every year. And I use this joke all the time. It never gets old. You don't just come in your underwear. Please don't do that. But you show up to, and the cost of admittance to this party is a new package of underwear, a new package of socks, or $10. And all of those underwear and socks come to our kids to make sure they all have these new items for the holidays. We have so many businesses, so many individuals and families and book clubs and scout troops that adopt these families. It just really illustrates how wonderful of a community we have here in Batavia, that we take care of so many kids in Batavia. So, if you're interested in being involved in some way, there's 1,000 different ways to be involved. It's on our website. Everything's on our website, batavionitedway.org/AdoptAFamily. And you can always go to our website or email us at adoptafamily@batavionitedway.org. So, we're really excited about this event. This is coming, the mid-December is when the magic happens. So, we are really, really excited about providing, providing care and support and love to our families who need it most right now, in a time where lots of people are really needing it. We have, I think I've already said, we have more homeless kids in our Batavia Public Schools than we've ever had before. I think we are at 120 kids, more than 120 kids here in Batavia that are homeless. And then, that's pretty much all I have. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Questions? I just want to say that on behalf of the City Council, I think we owe a big thank you to the Batavia United Way, directed by you. You're kind of the power behind the throne here. But you really have driven this organization to a new height and done phenomenally nice things for a whole bunch of people who otherwise probably wouldn't have some of the festive holiday situations that will now occur because of Batavia United Way. So, thank you for making such a wonderful difference in our town and for helping so many people who really needed the help.
Thank you so much for your nice words. Appreciate it. Thanks.
All right, next, we have a presentation by our friends at the Batavia Chamber of Commerce. Margaret, chair.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. I echo your sentiments about Kathy Evangelista as the Director of United Way. She is phenomenal. I meet with her on a monthly basis. She is a regular at our not-for-profit forum that meets on the first Wednesday of every month, where about 25 consistent executive directors come together to talk about what's going on in our community and what's needed. And Kathy really keeps her finger on the pulse and does so much. Along with what she was saying, I just heard today that Lazarus House is at capacity. They have 82 adults and 17 children, and they can't take any more individuals. So, there really is a need out there, definitely. And I heard that if anybody can share with their friends, family, or book clubs, or any club that you're in, the link to make a meal, or a side dish, or a main dish for Lazarus House, they would really, really appreciate it. So, I just wanted to mention that. I also want to mention that we are still accepting nominations for the Batavia Citizen of the Year, the 2025 Citizen of the Year. This is someone who, like Kathy, selfless, serving the community, really has the Batavia spirit at heart. So, we will honor them at our Inspire Celebration in April, but the previous Citizens of the Year will get together next, at the end of this month, later this month, and collect the nomination letters and determine who the next Citizen of the Year is. So, you still have till Friday. If you could think of somebody that is deserving of this wonderful award, please email it to me at margaret@bataviahamber.org. We also are looking forward to Thursday, when we have Mayor presenting the state of the community, along with Tom Kim, the Superintendent of BPS 101, and the Executive Director of the Library, Joe Tucci, and Allison Niamella from the Batavia Park District. They have so many updates, and we have so much to be proud of what's going on here in Batavia. It will be a great event to know what's been accomplished in the year and what's coming up. So, thank you, Mayor, for being our keynote speaker. We have, we are partnering again with the Batavia High School. The Chamber has partnered for the last several years on their Batavia Women in Business Career Event. This is an event for female students, grades nine through 12, who want to know more or need to be exposed to business classes, marketing, finance, and leadership. So, we draw from the Batavia community, business leaders that can meet one-on-one with these students and give them a picture of what a career in business looks like. So, we're happy to have a whole bunch of representatives that were Chamber members who were interested in working and mentoring with these students. That event is going to be on November 19 at Batavia High School. Going into the holidays, now that we had Halloween, we're in the thick of it now, right? I wanted to mention that our annual Batavia Women in Business Holiday Luncheon is coming. It will be Thursday, December 11 at enticing cuisine. It benefits the Batavia Access Toy Drive and Kathy's Batavia United Way's Adopt a Family Program. This is truly one of our most heartwarming events of the year. It's a feel-good celebration that brings our business community together to give back. Many businesses even use this luncheon as their holiday staff party because it's a meaningful way to celebrate while making a difference. For this event, we're collecting completed raffle baskets, gift cards, and bottles of wine for our fundraising efforts, along with unwrapped toys and gift cards that go directly to the families in need. Please join us and celebrate the holidays and connect with other fellow professionals, and register for this event on our website, or stop if you are compelled to donate. This is a big announcement. Starting Monday, November 10, the Chamber will once again offer Holiday Bucks. These have been a big smash over the years. It's when the Chamber donates $5,000 out of our budget to match $5,000 in sales of regular Chamber Bucks. It's restricted to be $50 per residence. So, if you buy $50 in regular Chamber Bucks, we match that. Chamber Bucks never expire, but the Holiday Bucks expire in March because that's, we want people to spend them and get them into the businesses' hands. We've already fielded so many calls. They're going to go so quick this year. People are asking when they're going for, going up for sale. So, if you are interested, stop by early. This is just one of my favorite programs because it not only sponsors or helps the businesses in town, something the Chamber can contribute to, but it really does make our residents overjoyed. So, it's a really great program, and we're happy to do it again this year. I was not here last month, so bear with me while I welcome all our new Chamber members. Thanks for filling in for me last month, Robin. I appreciate that. We're adding members every week. We're 525 members strong. I am excited to welcome Excel Roofing Restoration, Valor Carts, House Toppers Exteriors, Urban Air Adventure Park, Majestic Highlands Homestead, Uplifter Sticker, Red Cloud Contracting, Turner Accounting, Quinn Design Build, Cutting Go Engraving, Elgin Meddy Transport, Grand Appliance, Patriotic Movers, Gravity Boba, Soul Studio, The Table Church, Cinco de Mayo Market, Schoolly Mitchell of Geneva, Three Day Blinds, Primerica Mortgage, Timber Creek Residences, and the Fox Valley Career Center. So, welcome to all those members. Please visit our website to learn more about each of them. Every ribbon-cutting, networking event, and workshop builds on our momentum at the Chamber. I want to mention a couple of our upcoming events. The ribbon cuttings, first of all, I wanted to mention those because those are small business dream come true that we could participate in and celebrating. We have a ribbon cutting for Audio Nova, November 7 at 10:00 a.m. A ribbon cutting ceremony for Warehouse 55, November 14 at 10:00 a.m. Ribbon cutting ceremony for Jeffrey Cesario Insurance Agency, his new location by Water Street Studios. That's November 18 at noon. And then, as I mentioned, mark your calendars for the BWIB Holiday Luncheon. Last month, each month, we focus a different restaurant in Batavia as our Restaurant of the Month. Last month, it was Everdeen's. They had a great turnout. We stopped there for lunch, and it had 25 people. We filled up the place. It was great. This month, for November, our focus restaurant, our Chamber Eats Restaurant, is JT's Tavern and Pub. So, I know we've talked at this council meeting many times about how their food is delicious. We're having a drop-in lunch, if you'd like to join us, on November 21 at noon. Does anybody have any questions for me before I introduce my guest? Great. Tonight, I am pleased to introduce Amy Trujillo, Trujijo. You'll correct me, I know, Trujillo. She's the head of the school at Vanguard Gifted Academy on East Wilson Street. She's been there since July. So, come on up and tell us wonderful things about what's going on at Vanguard. Thanks, Amy. And let me turn, open your slides.
Like she said, I'm Amy Trujillo. You had it right the first time.
Okay.
Sounds good. So, before we get started, I wanted to thank everyone for having us here. I'm the head of school at Vanguard Gifted Academy, and I wanted to start with a magic trick before we get started. So, does anybody actually want to do the magic trick? So, I'm going to attempt...
So I'm going to attempt to pick your birthday between 1 and 31, so the day you were born. So look in all of the groups. It may be in multiple groups. Is your birthday in Group A?
No.
Is it in B?
Yes.
Is it in C?
Yes.
Is it in D?
Yes.
Is it in E?
No.
Is it the 14th?
Apparently, that's the one that's in all three in the middle.
It is. Okay. All right. So I won't take too much of your time. This trick is a perfect fun demonstration of binary math, which is fundamental in all computing. It's based on a lesson from the brilliant mathematician James Tanton, who created exploding dots. And Mr. Tanton just talked to our kids last week about the invention of zero. So thank you, Margaret, and the Chamber of Commerce for having us here. We are honored to be here tonight. We are thrilled to be back in the Batavia business community, and I would like to share how gifted, the Vanguard Gifted Academy is supporting gifted students and enriching our town. So our school is not just a typical school. We serve gifted students as well as twice-exceptional students. It's students who have incredible potential but require a personalized, differentiated approach to learning. And our mission is simple, just guiding children. Oh, somebody's switching it. Guiding children through a life of discovery, empowerment, and innovation. And then, we are a nonprofit organization, and so we are completely funded by tuition and donations. So we have no federal funding, no state funding. So everything that comes in stays right in our community and for our students. And we understand that we have gifted students there who need very different items. So we embrace their characteristics that make them unique, while kindling their willingness to explore and create. We don't teach subjects in isolation. We teach them in stream approach, which is science, technology, research, engineering, art, and math. And we have units that last all quarter, and it connects everything together. So right now, our younger students are learning about Egypt and farm-to-table, and our older ones are learning about Middle Ages and the cells. We nurture strong mental habits that build confidence, model flexibility, and foster strong character traits. This leads to confident, resilient adults who are prepared to solve real problems of the future. And while our mission is to support our students that are enrolled, but also to support any students in our area, we have a lot of kids that travel from other places as well. So we have items that are coming up free to the community, like the Veterans Day 3D Challenge, which is this Thursday, a Noetic Math Competition. We have 40 seats that we paid for, for anybody in the community. And then we have a art contest and a math circle that happens every month. So we just had our last math circle at the library. And we have our quarterly showcase every quarter. And then the public is invited to it, like the mayor could come, everybody could come, and see the kids, and they present in an innovative way. And then in addition to this, our school, I am the Math Kangaroo Illinois State Director. And so this is a competition that actually started in Chicago in the 90s. And then we are happy to help any organization or church start up their own center, and then get kids more into the Math Kangaroo Contest. Vanguard is a dedicated resource for enhancing educational opportunities in Batavia. We are grateful to be a part of this community. We've been here for eight years, so we're part of the Commerce again. We're very proud. And we have a commitment to excellence and community outreach, and that makes us a strong partner. We invite you to join us for any of the free events, including the December 17th Showcase Night. And then we look forward to contacting you. Like it was mentioned, we are at 1078 East Wilsons. We're right up the road. And our phone number is 224-213-0087. And our email is gifted@vanguardgiftedacademy. And we're on social media at Vanguard Gifted Academy. Is there any questions?
Questions? Well, we thank you for the good job you're doing and the great reputation you're bringing to Batavia for the quality of education that you're putting out there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move now to Item 11, which is the regular agenda. And the first thing we have is City Council updates and the Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Got a lot going on. But one of the things that I wanted to let City Council know is that I have invited the Executive Director from the Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry and Clothes Closet to come talk to us on November 17th. With the potential for SNAP benefits having been cut, but partially restored, and they're going to be late, there are many people in our community who are worried about the food security of our neighbors. And I just invited Eileen to come and talk to us about the Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry has been preparing for events like this, but it'll give us an opportunity for her to tell the community if there are additional needs that might exist. So she'll be here on November 17th. In Community and Economic Development, the Plan Commission is going to have its regular meeting on this Wednesday. And there will be a few things on their agenda. One will be a conditional use for video gaming at Gammon Coach House at 3 South Batavia Avenue. And also on the agenda is a design review approval for the park renovations at Winding Creek Park by the Geneva Park District. Sometimes people, it makes people's ears perk up to think that the Geneva Park District has parks which are located within the city boundaries of Batavia, but the same is true for the school districts as well. They don't necessarily follow the city boundaries. And then in open house and public hearing for the South River Street Corridor Study will hold that here on November 19th from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. And then the public hearing will be at 7 o'clock p.m. The Historic Preservation Commission had their second meeting regarding the demolition certificate of appropriateness for the former Acosta's Ethan Allen Hubbard Building at 14 to 18 North Batavia Avenue. After a tour of the building, the HPC did vote to recommend conditional approval of the COA, and this will be forwarded to City Council for final action with the committee meeting on November 10th. Construction season is wrapping up, and we've got several projects throughout town that were overseeing the completion of punch list items and restoration of the disturbed areas. The site work at the wastewater treatment plant, the pavement and concrete is starting to take shape, and we're going to get most of that work done here in the next two weeks. And then our Police Department and Fire Department want to thank you for participating in the many trunk-or-treats that were going on around town, and then also just for being in our neighborhoods and being visible and engaging with the community on Halloween. The City of Batavia Proposed Fiscal Year 2026 Budget has been released, and it outlines plans to maintain strong police, fire, and municipal services while preparing for future growth. It incorporates priorities from the city's 2024 to 2028 Strategic Action Plan, which was developed with a tremendous amount of community input and approved by the City Council. The plan guides long-term investments in infrastructure, safety, and the quality of life here living in Batavia. The City Council will, the first meeting will take place tomorrow night at a special committee of the whole meeting at 7 o'clock. And then leaf collection has begun this week on the east side, and west side begins Monday, November 10th. Residents should rake the leaves to the parkway by 6 o'clock a.m. on the Monday of their scheduled week. The piles should be within six feet of the curb and not into the street. If the leaves get in the street, then they have the propensity to block stormwater runoff. So, and also, don't mix leaves with brush. And collection will occur rain or shine. And weather permitting, there will be a third leaf pickup, beginning on November 17th for the east side and November 24th for the west side of the city. Those leaves, once again, hung onto the trees for longer than they have in years past. We are also seeking public input on the Long-Term Electric Reliability and Affordability Plan. It's known as our Integrated Resource Plan. And it's a long-range study to ensure reliable and affordable electricity over the next 20 years. We hired a consultant named Brattle Group, and the IRP evaluates market trends, customer needs, and available technologies to guide how the city will power homes and businesses in the future. This is just a preliminary IRP, and we're looking for feedback through public comments. You can go to the website at bataviail.gov/electricstudy and provide any comments there. But we also plan on having a public meeting on December 9th and the, through the online survey, which is available through December 30th. And then I wanted to just provide an update on the lead service line replacement. We're coming to the conclusion of year number two, and all 425 planned replacements are complete. The final restoration work is expected to be wrapping up soon. And for year three, we have an additional 110 service replacements. And to date, more than 850 service lines have been replaced citywide. Batavia is far ahead of most communities in the number of lead service lines that we have been able to replace, and just really have to hand it to our water utility, all of the employees, and the leadership of Jeremy Barki, to jump ahead on something that is so incredibly important to the health of our community. You can read more about the Lead and Galvanized Steel Water Service Line Replacement Project at, on our website at bataviail.gov/gettheleadout. And that's all I have today, unless anybody has any questions for me. Yes, I'll do them alone.
Just a quick comment. Actually, you know, Halloween just came around, and it was a blast. Of course, the fire truck came around to one house we were at. All the kids were excited, as the fire trucks tend to hand out candy. They were actually there for an over-aggressive fog machine. So I just want to thank the Fire Department. They handled that with professionalism. The children were excited. They still were professional and welcoming while doing their duty. And it just is a great testament to how great it is for our Fire Department and how, such a great job that they do. So I wanted to do a special thank you to them for both keeping us safe and getting the kids excited.
I did have one more item that was an emergency that has come up over the last couple of days. Our Vector truck that we use when sewers and drains and things of that nature get clogged had a fan that detached within a hose and caught fire. And it's quite an expensive replacement on a very expensive piece of machinery. We use this every single week here, but it is especially necessary in the case where we have a flood or a big clog in a drain, and things can be, can go quite south if we do not have it available to us. And so we would like to get authorization for an emergency repair. I wouldn't, you know, it wasn't, we didn't know the price of the repair and time to have it put on this agenda, but I just wanted to let you know that the total price of the repair is estimated to be $57,646.30. And you will see the authorization for payment of that amount on the next City Council meeting. So just an emergency that we're going to have to attend to. In the meantime, we just can't wait two weeks. So, but I want to make you aware of it.
Just to put it into perspective, that truck's probably what, over $500,000 truck?
Yes.
Easily. I think it was more than that the last time we replaced one, so.
In order to rent one, would cost us $15,000 per month. So, and the lead time on it is...
Right now, it is proposed in next year's budget.
Yes.
You will see it split across different divisions. But it's, originally, we thought it was a nine-month lead time. Scott Haynes checked today, and it has gone down to five to six months. The cost has gone up a little bit, but we had valued trade-in for our vehicle. And if our vehicle is not operating with the piece of, or the function that everybody wants that truck for, it's really not worth as much. So that's why we're looking at it. It got looked at immediately, and it'll be a seven to 10-day lead time, and then three to five days to repair it.
Offline for a couple of weeks.
And yes, it is a machine that gets fought for.
Yeah.
In the divisions. So, you know, some divisions only get it for one or two days a month, and that day can't come soon enough for them. This time, they were the one that broke it, but, just kidding. That machine has had lots of, it's a heavily-used machine.
Heavily-used, and it's end of life, so.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other business from the Council? On the line?
Yeah, Mayor. Thank you. Last week, we had a great discussion about an Immigration Enforcement Ordinance. On November 10th, we should be seeing a draft of that ordinance at our Committee of the Whole Meeting. I would like to make the motion that we have a special City Council meeting immediately following that Committee of the Whole Meeting on November 10th to consider the adoption of the Immigration Enforcement Ordinance that is proposed at that City Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Second, ma'am.
Motion, second, and a discussion?
No, not for that. No.
Malone.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Darren Beck.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
14, yes, no, no, and then absent.
Just approve.
Runner, I had something I wanted to bring up under other.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to kind of propose out to Council, and I'm happy to kind of coordinate this, as a Council collectively, adopting a family through United Way, and maybe also Adopt a Bag through Chipton, and also, you know, look at getting some Toys for Access Toy Drive. I just wanted to kind of bring it up as a group together, but be happy to send out an email and coordinate that and kind of say, here's what we have, you know, for a family and coordinate with Kathy on a family. If everybody is willing to do that, I feel like, at this time, as a collective, it's maybe easier than individuals trying to do that. So just wanted to kind of bring that up if everybody's in agreement. And you can see an email from me then with some details of what's needed, so.
As long as I can still go shopping for toys.
I'm happy to go shopping. Yeah. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
So I've had a few community members and residents asking still about Route 31 and what we're, if we're doing anything yet, or any further improvements for safety. And I know I've been communicating a little bit with staff about that, but I think just an update would be appreciated. So, okay. Thank you. About the road diet, yeah.
I don't know if you saw, but I replied to that today, and I definitely think that we need to, you know, maybe turn heat up a little bit on that with the Kane County Forest Preserve and Park District talking about having a crossing on the river. That would be a ped crossing, bike crossing type thing down there. I really think we need to talk about how soon we can get something done down there. And with that addition of traffic, foot traffic, bike traffic, that we really try to push to get a light down there, a signalized crossing, because I think, I don't want to wait until somebody else dies down there. I want to make sure that, I know that they don't buy the traffic warrants or whatever the, it is. They don't, IDOT does not believe that it warrants that yet.
And in addition, they won't support a traffic signal without a configuration like we have up here at Wilson, and 31 with the five lanes. That's just what we've heard back from them, so we will be, will work with them.
So they would have to have a protected left-hand turn lane going north?
Yes. And then that kind of...
With five, even though we have the road diet in there?
That's, I think, just their standard, but, you know, we're going against that, so we'll talk with them and see.
And if that means that... And if that means that, you know, due to traffic counts or whatever, we have to go with a rapid flashing beacon or something for a period of time, but the eventual goal, in my mind, really needs to be a light, so that there is a safer way to turn left off of Millview and a safer way to turn left onto Millview. And again, a safer way to turn into that park, turning left, and then also for any pedestrians, whether it's a bike or pedestrian, we have to figure out how to make that safer there. You know, and I feel like if we can convince the county to help with that, they can lean on IDOT as much as we can, if not more. You know, and then we, the three of us could participate in funding that to get that done. Since it is a state route, and I think IDOT should pay for some of it. But if they wouldn't pay for it, at least if they would okay it, I think we could figure out how to fund it.
Anybody else? Do you have anything you want to add?
I have one. If anybody didn't notice, the Bulldogs had a great game last Friday night in the first round of playoffs. They beat Hoffman Estates 56 to nothing. They are playing at Glenbard East this Friday night, so if anybody wants to come out and brave the cold, it will be another great game. I don't think it'll be a blowout like last week, but it'll still be a good game. If you can't get there, I believe, we should know by Wednesday if BATV is going to be able to broadcast. We will be giving our feed again to NFHS, so to get that, you'll have to get their web subscription to do that. And then, it is available on our Comcast channels. So, if you know somebody or want to, you know, visit somebody in town that has Comcast, they can broadcast it on that. But the web feed, because NFHS buys the rights to the Illinois IHSA playoffs, they get the webcast. And so, they pay the fees, we give them our feed because I feel like it's the best feed around. And when, you know, we're not broadcast, we really hear it. Dave and I, our phones blow up constantly when we're at games, sitting in the stands, so, and we love doing it. So, it's going to be another good game Friday.
Tonight for announcements, does anybody else have any? We're going then to Item 12-3, the mayor's report. I can kind of just piggyback on what Alderman Wolf just said. I came down here on Saturday morning to do some stuff, and there was a gentleman wandering around out in front, and then he came into the police department and wanted to know if anybody was around, and the person, well, the mayor just walked in. So, I go in, and this guy says, hey, I'm here to tell you that I just bought a, I'm buying a townhouse out on Van Nortryck Avenue at Houston Street in the new subdivision that's out there. And I said, oh, the first electric. And he says, yeah, he says, I've got grandchildren that are in the Batavia schools here, and my wife and I have decided if we really want to have some fun and in the action, we need to live in this town near those schools. So, he says, but what I really was excited about was, and last night, I got to listen to this broadcast of this football game, and the two guys that did it, I swear, they must have been trained at WGN on the broadcast of sports because they had an outstanding presentation about what, and he says, that really made me make my mind up to, yeah, I'm moving to Batavia. So, I'd like to publicly thank Alderman Wolf for your good broadcast because now you're bringing them in.
Years of practice.
Well, great, great side story there. I like to tell it. And the next thing I'd like to share is, is that we are having some, you know, some new success out on First Street at Van Nortryck, at the Batavia Interfood Food Pantry and Clothes Closet. You've already heard about it tonight. But I just wanted to let everybody know, and I think most of you do know, that we were able to buy that building for those folks for that purpose with a cash contribution that was given to us by our former Congresswoman Underwood. And she went and got, through Congress, a $3 million appropriation, which she gave to the City of Batavia to buy the food pantry and the clothes closet. The building costs $2 million, so we have a million left to spend, but we have to spend it on that building. We just can't go off someplace else in town and do something different. So, that building is, if you haven't been in there, I encourage you to stop by sometime. They've done some nice things in there already, and I think we've got a permanent home for that operation in Batavia, and we're one of the cities in the area, and I've had other mayors in here asking me about this. How did we put that together, and how do we, how do we so well run that as we seem to be doing? And I said, well, now we've got this new facility, and that really is helping us understand what is really going on in Batavia and where people know where they should go and come to and whatever have you. So, we really do have some very nice things happening. Unfortunately, as I said, we lost Congresswoman Underwood. She got reapportioned out of Batavia, and so, she's not with us anymore, but she certainly did her good term. And I'll never forget that one day she called me and said, could you meet me out at the Elms Restaurant? So, I didn't know what this was all about, so I get in the car and I drive out there, and I get out there, and she's sitting out on, out front of the Elms. It was still open at that point, in her shorts on. And she says, I understand, we really need a clothes closet and a food pantry in here, and there's this building that you're looking at, and I just wanted you to drive me by it so I know what I'm going to put into Congress and ask for appropriation for. So, I guess she got in my car, and we went over and looked at it, and she says, well, I'll do this. And she says, I think I can get this through, and she did. So, that's how the whole thing kind of came together, and she, there's 100% of the credit of that coming together, because they say she called me on the phone, and she's sitting on the gravel over on the Elms Restaurant on Main Street, waiting for me to get there. And so, that's all good stuff. So, that's my Batavia stories for the meeting, and I guess we're going to adjourn now, but we're going to, after we adjourn, we're going to have a special committee of the whole meeting, and it looks like most of it may be an executive session, but, so, I'm going to ask for a motion for adjournment.
Motion?
Second.
Motion, second. Court call the roll.
Call in favor?
Aye.
How do we get that over in an hour?